All right, I guess that means we're ready to go.
Call to order, the Tannama Desert Planning Board Meeting for October ninth, twenty twenty four. And I'll start off by saying, welcome aboard. All right, so just kick things off first with some introductions. William Hanley Chair, our Vice Chair, Tracy Loftus Keller is not here tonight, but we have regular board member. And all with us, we've got Gail Marshall, Alan Timmerly, and alternate Daniel Burke. And because Tracy isn't here tonight, I think the first thing we should do is.
Make a motion to stand the number of today.
Second that.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, Daniel.
Into the breach.
Yeah.
Voting Member.
Yeah, and then just for all of you out there joining us on Zoom, if you can, please just sign into chat. As, just so we have a library of who's attending and then just please add. I'm sure we're all familiar with Zoom protocol by now and it looks like everybody is, but if you are out there in Zoom world, just. Put your on, put yourself on mute, if you have something to say during public comment, raise your hand and we'll get right to you. And let's, let's get on with it and. Heidi, can you remind me of the minutes we have to prove?
September eleventh or September twenty fifth.
There you go.
I move approval.
Second.
For the allowance.
Each one of these we've all been over.
Yes. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the minutes of the twenty fifth.
I move approval.
Second.
And I have a question, is that the one in which you didn't have information about?
The one, it was the size of the lot for Dodge Point.
Yeah.
So it just isn't in there, I listened to the recording twice again. I couldn't find anything that I could.
So we'd have to make a bonding, we wouldn't just amend the minutes, but we'd amend the findings.
I think it was discussed, sorry. I'm part of the minutes now. I believe, yes. What's that, aren't the checklists considered to be part of the minutes now? Sorry, I have to also watch this.
Hold off until next time.
Anybody?
You're.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, all right, let's press pause button on the minutes from the twenty fifth.
Okay, so you don't know.
No.
Well, how do you want to correct that deficiency? I mean, I think the size of the lot was discussed, seem to call that. There's six point something, I don't remember the total head.
What is your concern about the deficiency?
I, well, she's saying that we don't have it.
I'm just stating that that piece is blank on the four point three point five.
The size of the lot.
Size of the lot for the Dodge Point, yes, you definitely did mention specific size of the lot for the tennis club. That was in there, but I couldn't.
There's no mention of the acreage or.
I, I went through my notes, I listened to the recording twice. It's just not, there's nothing specific to the size of the lot that I could pin down to support that, that first criteria for point three point five.
We've broken out in two sections, in the shoreline zone, they had two point something acres and then outside of that, they had four acres.
Right, and I was on the survey. And, and it was, it was just never mentioned, never mentioned.
I mean, I'm just thinking about procedurally, how, how do you correct that? I mean, is that something the chair can go and look, Kim?
Well, you could, you could reference, I mean, you had the survey plan. Right.
Just make an amendment to the minute, minutes and reference the.
My, yeah, that was my suggestion.
You can, because it's all part of the package. It's just they don't get out.
The minutes now.
Yeah. I would just reference the survey there. Okay, so I will move to approve the minutes. And then we'll do an amendment after we get the motion on the floor. That'd be right, yes.
No, I.
You meant as amended.
Yeah.
Reference of section four point three point five to the survey plan relative to lots of this.
Okay, so.
Can we have that one more time, I'm sorry? We're referencing the survey plan.
Survey plan, yeah, that was submitted with the application relative to section four point three point five. To lot number.
Just states the lot area, is that?
I want state of lot area.
You got it.
Yes, survey plan relative to section four point three point five states the lot area.
As the size of lot, as she was saying, size of the.
I made the motion. Alan seconded it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
I, as amended, correct.
As amended. Me go.
Thank you for noticing.
All right, well, let's, I think there was a question from you that applicant about the agenda tonight before we get into it.
It's possible for us to go.
You have to start your, no, I'm sorry, you have to start your public.
I know that.
Six oh five.
I know, I know that, I'm just procedurally going through the motion. So there was a request from the applicant tonight for the. Item five on the agenda, if we could shuffle the, the agenda around, have them go first and the first go last, but. The complication that was brought, brought to my attention is that we, we published the specific time of the public hearing. For the first item on the agenda tonight and we've got members of the public here for that, so. You know, it's, we'll, we'll roll through it as best as we can, but I, I think we've got to stick to the agenda because of that. All right.
We just have a plane, someone coming in to, to coordinate, it's drawing.
All right. I know you guys can. Right, so let's, let's keep rolling here, so we've got. Item three on the agenda tonight, we have a subdivision application at section four point five. We have a public hearing at six oh five tonight, so, and this is subdivision application oh oh two, twenty twenty four. Owner Broadway Cabin LLC, agent Marius Bellino, location is Aspen Way, Mount Desert. Tax map twelve, lot thirteen dash twenty nine dash oh oh five. Zoning District Shoreland Residential Five and Rural Woodland Three. Purpose to divide lot number five within the soul tear subdivision amendment number four. And are there any conflicts of interest on this one?
Not for me.
Gail?
No.
And?
No.
Daniel?
Will, William.
I think I have one because I live in this development, so I would ask the board to kindly accept my. Recusal on this first application.
I move acceptance for recusal.
Second.
That's my best input.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Then you guys, because just Tracy isn't here tonight, then you need to elect a chair. In my absence.
I suggest, Gail, take over.
I'll second that.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go get her, Gail.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, Kim's willing us to be my co. Oh.
Grab the hammer.
Okay, no, I don't.
Thorns.
Um.
The rant.
Okay. So we have, bear with me here, um, we do have a public hearing. And we are at the point where this application was deemed complete, but for. I believe we need a flat plan, is that correct?
Yeah, you, while you found them.
And we needed a map that has been provided. So with that in mind, the next step would be a public hearing. And we are in a position where we can simply open this up for public comment. And I would just ask anyone who wishes to comment, just say their name. And if you have a particular relationship to this app, with that this application, you're a budding property owner or what have you, you would just state that at the outset, that would help us. And with that, I will open this up for public hearing. And if anybody wants to comment online, we'll try to notice you and recognize you and make that happen too, so anyone in here. Or anyone online who just addressed this application.
Well, I, I would like to address it if I could.
And who are?
My name is Bill Mulchen. I and my wife own lot six that abuts lot five. And we were given notice of the hearing tonight. And what I'd like to find out is. It, it, or is the, the ultimate purpose to sell one of the lots? If it gets divided and if so, which one would be sold and which one would be retained? Would it be proposed lot seven or proposed lot five? Is, can anyone answer that?
Well, um.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and this is Justin Pajazek, the owner of the lot with my wife through the, the entity there. We, we would intend to, to sell one of the lots and, but we haven't determined which, which lot would be sold. They're both very beautiful lots, but we haven't quite made a determination on that front.
But you certainly believe you're going to sell one of them, that's the whole purpose of dividing this.
Yeah, the thirteen acres was just more land than we needed. So that we spent some time getting familiar with the property and kind of came to that conclusion over time.
Thank you. Mr. Mulchen, do you have anything further you'd like to ask?
Not at this time, if, I mean, if, if anything else I want to say, I, I certainly will. We'll go ahead if anybody else wants to say anything.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else either online or in the audience would like to address this matter in this public comment time? I don't see anybody with their hands up, and we have everybody on the screen, right? Anyone here? If there is no other, I, I just, I guess at this point I'll circle back to you, Mr. Mulchen, because it seems so, there may not be any other public comment. So if we get to that point, we'll close the public comment, so this would be another opportunity for you to speak to us.
I, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else looks like somebody speaking, but.
Carter is trying to say something, I don't know if she's on mute.
Are you voucher, are you attempting to speak? If you're, if you are, you're on mute, so you need to unmute. We can't hear you. Or type, type of comment then, so. Just trying to say. But we don't use chat.
It's, it's.
Boucher, thank you. Maybe she was getting some help. We're, we're still not hearing you. You are still muted. Anybody tell them where the mute, the mute button is usually down at the bottom.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so I'm in Boucher, I own one of the abutting lots. And I just want to reiterate that we had some issues previously before the lots were sold. And we're just hoping that this will all go smoothly. And that there is no intention of making any changes. To road privileges or any such thing. Which could lead to another situation like the one we had. I briefly met the new owners and they seem very nice, so I don't anticipate that. But I just wanted to mention that as a comment because it caused a lot of strife within our otherwise very close group.
Yes, I don't, from what I see, the application, I don't anticipate that it's going to impact the terms and conditions involving the use of the road at all. That's, that's, I, I personally don't see anything in that application that would affect that. And I, we understand there was an issue previously with a prior owner. And we understand that perhaps that got resolved with some documents that exchanged hands at the outset of this ownership, so, thank you.
Thank you, I, I just wanted to make that comment because I think it affected many of us quite. Badly and I don't, I'm not anticipating that there would be any such issues, I just wanted to mention it because it was a very bad experience for many of us. So, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Um, I guess I missed, Mr. Mulchen's done, unless you change your mind, um, yes.
Uh, Dorvia Ivan, I'm also a member of the Woodswood Association of to which the subdivision belongs. A question that might best answered by Kim, is there any? Means that we are aware of that the developer of the soul tear subdivision could in future annex land to that subdivision? And attempting to use that subdivision for? You're talking about, we have a side. If that ever were to happen, they'd have to come back to planning board. To have it looked at. I don't anticipate it being connected, but I don't know. But any amendment like that would, would have to come back for revision.
And it would have to go through its own process separate from this.
It may not require a full oral review, it depends on the board, we require to have. Full oral review, which if it doesn't create lots or if it's not going outside the scope of subdivision. And it's not creating units, then ideally it doesn't require public hearing, but certainly is required.
I'm glad you directed that, Kim. Anyone else? If not, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And the board can then proceed to process this application. Now, we had, I had some question about how we proceed in this regard. We could, in theory, go through all the provisions of the subdivision, division ordinance, making sure that all of the provisions have been met, four point two and so forth. But my understanding is that since we accepted this as complete at the prior meeting. That as long as we set aside ourselves that the public comment has not substantially impacted. The board's deliberation, then what we need to do is.
You have to listen to it, no.
Move, move approval of the application.
Yeah, there is a form in front of you, Gail.
It is.
No, one that, one of the pieces right there, no, right there.
Yes.
Where on this four seven, you guys, you're ideally saying the application is complete and you receive the final flat plans, which I assume she hasn't. So, yeah, if. So at this point, it's complete, you had to close the public hearing, done, you can vote on it and then you sign the plans and I got to report it.
Then make a motion to approve that.
Yes, go for it.
Make a motion to approve the, the plan that's submitted.
Second that motion?
Discussion?
Oh, also can we backtrack a little bit, you need to verify that public, no, the abutters were notified to the lease.
Is that this?
Yeah, I can show you.
Okay.
I ripped the newspaper up. So you guys can read it, because.
Should I do that, because you're a chair?
Sure, it's right here.
Uh, the public was notified on the Ellsworth American and the Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Of the planning board meeting for this. And. Also in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Of this said meeting.
And then the abutters are in there there.
And the abutters were notified. As well.
The abutters have been, were notified.
Do I have to read the abutters?
No, you just have to put the date if they were mailed and there's a list in the back.
Both of the abutters are there.
I can't hear you.
Both of the abutters are here, Mulchen.
Yeah. Yes, very good question. So, which one will they got?
I, I, he asked me if I knew, I said I didn't.
Perhaps we could, yeah, thank you. All right, looking for the least of the abutters. Here we go, the abutters were notified. There's a bar notification on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, and there's another one for this hearing. Let's see, thanks. On your voices. All right, come on. No, there you go. Okay. So bars were notified in September nineteenth, twenty twenty four. And we've got, stood up the, we stood up this. Okay, are we ready to proceed, having determined that notifications were properly?
The abutters have been notified.
Okay, any other comments or questions about the motion, if not all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. So I will sign this letter to Maria. And we, we have to sign the flat plan. And then this has to be reported. We have, there's a.
There's a signature.
Are we signing each of them?
Every one of them.
All right. So you can start.
Then pass them around.
There's another ten, maybe we don't sign up.
Just sign right under here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll sign here, yeah, yeah. I can care.
And so many can do. Starting every, actually, there.
Yeah. And the date is, I'm not, not. Down. I'm gonna give you this. And I'm not gonna get too. And then there's the letter. Yeah, no, I just. Thor and Thor. That, this.
You got a little more, I need that.
And here's, Kim, here's the document with the. And I think that concludes this matter.
Yes, the hammer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck. So, we will.
Bring William back.
Would you like to make a motion to, and we can turn the chair to the chair, that would be appreciated.
I'd like to make a motion to, well, return Bill Haley to the chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's Bill Hanley, Bill Haley was rocking on the clock. See, he was rocking on the clock.
All right. This train rolling down the tracks, so. Yeah, they're bringing it through here. All right, so. Let's keep going, so we have a conditional use approval application, it's application ten dash twenty twenty four. Owner name is Dean and Ruth Goodman, family trust, the agent applicant is Ariana, Ariana Goodman. Location is fourteen Oak Hill Road, Mount Desert, and tax map twenty one, lot nine dash oh oh one, zone Village Residential Two. And stream protection, the purpose of this is section three point four and six C point five, point two. Escavation and filling of less than cub, fifty cubic yards and other essential services. We had a site inspection at three fifteen and was this one advertised and abutters notified?
I believe so. Where do you find this stuff? I've never done this.
So. Morning too. Yeah, it should be, you got, we usually don't get a copy of it, it's right there.
All right.
Now, what's the agenda?
No, that's.
There's your abutters.
So we have an abutters list and the abutters were notified. September twenty third. Twenty twenty four. And we had notices placed.
I don't think that's.
That's not it.
That's just the agenda.
Yeah. We're aware of the notices place.
Yeah, and was it in the previous?
Oh, no, I think so.
Where'd our, where'd our blue folder go?
Was it in that folder? Specifically.
Should be.
Oh.
Yeah, butters were notified and uh Ellsworth American and uh Mount Desert Islander. On October. I mean, uh, September twenty six, twenty twenty four. All right. Let's keep that for the next one, too.
Yes.
Um, so we had a site visit at three fifteen today and. And did you care to report on your observations from the site?
So we observed an old section of sewer pipe that ran ran under what appeared to be a dried up riverbed. Um, probably not dried up in the spring, um, and the section that they'd like to replace was infiltrated by roots and damaged. Uh, so they're trying to replace it about a ten foot section of that sewer pipe. In dance.
It's pretty straightforward, I think we all observed the pipe.
They're not exactly, they're not replacing the section of the pipe that's actually in the stream bed, they want to replace it. That's immediately adjacent to it, just beyond it relative to the house, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a question of that it's too, that it's very close to the stream bed, not that it's actually in the stream bed.
And I just wanna have Kim clarify, they're here because they're in the stream protections.
Exactly why they're here, is they're doing any excavation or filling regardless of the amount requires additional use approval on the stream protection district.
There you go. I see, uh, so let's um. Let's first ask if there's any um public comment on this or if um the.
Do we need conflict of interest?
Yes, thank you, so is there any conflict of interest on this one?
No, no here.
No. Same here, all right, well then, unheard, let's open it up for public comment and if the um applicant two would like to add anything to it, uh, it's. Pretty straightforward.
I have nothing to add, just that need to fix the pipe.
Right on. All right, I'm not hearing any public comment online or in the room, oh. Any further comment? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, let's get on with the review of this, um, let's first have a motion to find it complete.
I'm moving, I'm moving, please.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, I, and um. Anybody might have a motion relative to using a short form.
Some of.
Checklist on this one. Right, all those in favor?
Hi.
I, and then we do our little wonky, um. Approval vote.
Time of approval?
Second, then we press the pause button and we're gonna go through the review of the application, so in front of me, I've got the um short form checklist. I've got the application. And let's do this. And I'm just following along. So. All right, section six A, general performance standards compatibility, uh, they talk about the physical size, it's ten feet of orange sewer pipe. And and they're gonna retain the necessary grade and pitch, it's uh fifteen feet from the cottage cottage and it can. And the density of developments that there's, lot contains two residential dwelling units and a storage shed. So see application, six eight two erosion and sedimentation control, application talks about that, they'll put hay down to prevent erosion in the stream. And the pipe is being hand dug. So the application, highway safety is uh N A. Impact on town services, none, it's already connected to public sewer, so.
I'm sorry, can we go back to six eight two, the the removal of sand and gravel?
Six eight two, so they.
They said not applicable.
Well.
They're gonna, they're not removing it, but they're gonna.
Well, the. The the application for six eight two erosion sedimentation control, this, the applicant says that hay will be put down to prevent erosion into the stream. And the pipe will also be hand dug to reduce and prevent erosion from occurring.
So, so we don't anticipate there's any, that subsection two applies that remove that sand and gravel.
So that, yeah, so they talked, our standard talks about mulching and revegetation and disturbed soil.
Okay.
Temporary runoff control features like hay, hay bales, self fencing, diversion ditches. And then three permanent stabilization structures, such as containing walls or ripper up.
Okay.
So they, they had an answer, so whereas when an applicant has an answer, we typically say see application.
Okay.
So, six eight four, impact on town services, none, current buildings are connected to town sewer, so there is. Reply there, so we say see application. Land suitability. They attached the Hancock County Soil Survey Book, see application, lighting outdoor. And a stormwater. Six eight seven. There's no change in the current stormwater runoff and they're not changing the section of pipe in the stream, so. See, see application. Six eight eight vegetation, um, N A, they're. If we all observe, there's none being removed or affected. Um, six eight nine dust, fumes, vapors, odors and gases. That's why, that's why we have those pipes there. So, see application. The findings of fact are presented by the applicant, then attached application, conclusion logs that both uses in compliance with all standards of section six A. For which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I. Okay, this is. Pretty much all N A, six B one agriculture, N A. Six B two air landing sites, N A, six B, and then it jumps to this, six B seven. That's excavation, that's why we're here, because they're in the stream protection zone, so see application.
That's what I get confused with.
And then the rest, fences and walls, N A. Sign regulations, N A, wireless communication facility, N A, animal husbandry two, N A. Mobile food vendors, N A, rooming house, N A, and hotels and motels, N A. So the findings of fact are that the proposed use include non-specific activities, land uses described in section six B, except for applicable section noted above, which is six B seven. And the conclusion laws that section six B is not applicable, except for section six B seven, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
I. It's not the shoreline zone, it is.
Protections.
The stream protection is the shoreline zone. There we go. So we go on to section sixty. Right, section sixty, shoreline zoning standards reviewed by the planning board, agriculture, N A. Archaeological sites, they had an attached map, see application. Essential services. We talked about this, existing sewer line provides services to a permitted use within the stream protection district. The existing stream runs across the whole front of the property, there's no reason reasonable existing alternative. See application, parking areas, N A. Marine freshwater structure standards is N A, they're not building a pier. Six C nine roads and driveways. And a six C eleven water quality. That's part of why we're here, it's a pre-existing line and the houses have been there since the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. And so see application. So the findings fact about the proposed use include non-specific activities and land uses described in section sixty, except for. Six C two, six C five, and six C eleven. And the conclusion law is that section sixty is not applicable, except for six C two, six C five, and six C eleven, for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
I. And because we're in the shoreline zone, we have to do section five nine, so just. Bear with me, so section five nine standards, five nine one will maintain safe and healthy conditions, see application. Five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters, see application. Five nine three will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. Hope so, five. Nine three is see application, five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds fish, aquatic life, or bird or other wildlife habitat. See application, five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. And A. They're not on the shore, five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated on the comp plan. See application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing and maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. And A, they're not in the shoreline commercial district. Five ninety will avoid problems with the floodplain development and use, see application. Five nine nine is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, six B, and six C, for which the standard has been met. The findings of fact are see above, and the conclusion was all requirements of section five nine have been now.
I'm moving.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
I. Are there any permit conditions to this one? I don't think so. Yeah, there's no permanent conditions to this.
Yeah, she's gonna need D P permit by rule.
There you go. So. So there's a main D P permit by rule required.
I have already applied for that permit.
Fantastic. All right, so then back to our P track player and let's press play on the approval vote, um. All those in favor of approving the application with the um permit condition of the receipt of the main D P permit by rule?
All right.
Hi. I. It's such a weird way to do it, but. Congratulations.
Thank you, now, do they send you the D E P permit, Kim, or how does that work?
Yeah, I'll get a copy of it.
You'll get a copy, okay, I'll follow up with them and see the timeline, because it's pretty urgent.
You will.
Right.
Very much.
Two applications in a public hearing in forty five minutes. All right.
That's quick for all.
It's not rest on our walls.
No, never. Uh, item five, non-conforming structures, tonight we have um owner named Northeast Harbor Tennis Club. Agent is Matthew Baird, architects, location is forty four Manchester Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty five, lot twenty. Zone Shoreland Residential Two, uh, the purpose is section four point three point six. Reconstruction and replacement, section four point three point five relocation. Section four point three point four foundation, section four point three point two expansion, and section four point three. Um, subsection F limitations on height of non-conforming structures, this is the reconstruction of the men's locker room, kitchen, shade pavilion, dining pavilion, and deck. At the Northeast Harbor Tennis Club. Great, we had a site inspection at three forty five and were the. The butters notified.
Butters were notified on September eleventh, twenty twenty four.
And Alan, what was the date of the paper again?
And uh, on Thursday, September twenty sixth of twenty twenty four, it was put in the public notices in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander.
We had a site inspection at three forty five and.
We need to do uh conflict of interest to throw that out there.
I was gonna get there.
I need to trust you.
Yeah. So is there any conflict of interest on this application?
No.
None here.
None heard, and um Daniel, would you care to report on your observations today of the?
We went back at the swim club. And observed uh the four structures that are gonna be reconstructed and rebuilt. Men's locker room will be. Reconstructed in its original footprint, but raised approximately five feet. The um. I don't know, blank comment, it was called the.
Better shade.
Shade pavilion, it's gonna be reconstructed but set further back. As much as it can be, I believe. With the um contours of the land. Um, the kitchen and the two apartments that are above it uh will also be reconstructed. Um, in its original footprint, um, but also raised slightly again, this is all in conjunction with the new FEMA. Uh, requirements or recommendations uh for elevations. As well as the dining, that will be raised, and if I remember correctly, the um. Top of the roof elevation is also going to be raised by about two feet. And the decking surrounding. And the decking surrounding the whole place will be redone.
Anything else from the board to add to those observations?
I I concur. It's what people have to do these days with. The rise of sea level, which is what they're doing, raising everything up.
Alright, well, I'll kick it over to the agent then.
Think that you presented the project super clearly. We can. Represent for anybody else who has questions, but that's essentially what we're doing. Elevating the four. Buildings. Do with their outdoor pavilions, the kitchen and the dining room. The FEMA guidelines.
Alright. Well, I guess I'll open it up for public comment then. Anybody has any questions about this project? Step up to the mic. Going once. Twice. Not hearing any public comment. So let's close public com- comments and. Get on with this one and, you know, as we were talking a little bit about at the site, there's a. These nonconforming projects are not a linear review, so. I think the first thing the board needs to determine is if this project even qualifies. To be reviewed by us and I believe we've all received a letter from Jerry Summersby, an appraiser. About the project.
You want to hear us talk about that? Jerry Summersby has appraised property under the provisions of. Four points. The the owner has to demonstrate that fifty percent or more of the value of the property has has damaged. Has been damaged or will be damaged by its. Replacement process and Mr. Summersby determined that indeed. That standard has been met. And we have a letter in the file. Thank you. There's a comment he's no significant storm damage and. They the alteration replacement by the construction process.
Then I think we should still. You know, this. This one's and we talked a little bit about this too, but. At the at the site meeting, but this one is structured a little bit differently where I've got. Pseudo checklist for. Four, three, six, four, three, four, three, five and four, three, two and. Relative to where we are right now in the process, this checklist of four, three, six is exactly that that we. That because of the value of the damage relative to the appraised value of the structure. You know, this falls within our purview. So I think what we should do is probably have a. Findings of fact and conclusion of law and then since we have this form in front of us and it's referenced on the. On the our purpose here, we probably should. Complete this, have a finding, conclusion law. Vote on it and then it's all sign listed.
And you think that's the only one we need to do or?
Well, you know, I. As much as we like to expedite applications and I think given the. Multiple, multiple structure. Nature of this project and. I think which is initiating. Multiple section review here, we probably should have a finding and conclude conclusion law in each and every one of these. But some of these are a little redundant, but I think again where. You know, this, these. These specific sections are referenced in our purpose and we have these pseudo checklist for each section. I think we should. Do all four of these. So again, this first one is just a findings of fact and conclusion of law. Giving us jurisdiction to review this. So let's get that out of the way first.
Well, if all we need is to review it is that it's been damaged.
So.
I mean, if we're talking about all the terms of four point three point six. Then we can go with those.
So all we're reviewing here is that like has the applicant. Providing evidence that the damage exceeds. The appraised value of the property. Which they have per Jerry summons bees ladder dated. So that there is a findings of fat and there. And then the conclusion of law therefore. Biden Ward has jurisdiction under the.
But this, yeah, but this but this document here contains many more criteria for determining whether or not.
I think we're gonna.
Got setback requirements, we've got.
Yeah, so that. You know, that's that's going to be parsed in the subsequent section.
Okay, except that it's also referred to in four point two point six. Just trying to figure out what she did here.
Yeah, and so this is the. Circular review.
So I will move that. That. The facts are. That per a letter from a certified appraiser Jerry summons being dated September twenty fifth. Twenty twenty four. Advocate has demonstrated. That. The value of the property. The damaged components and or the components to be reconstructed or replaced comprise more than fifty percent of the market value of the structures. And therefore. Conclusion is that. The planning board has jurisdiction to. Review this application.
Any further discussion? Unheard, all those in favor? Let's sign that one. But this is. Let's follow the. It's a yellow brick road here and. If I'm not mistaken and. We're, are we, we're jumping the section four point three point five now. Let me just. We are. So now we're talking about relocation.
But as it relates to six. Or relocation.
So again, just to put this all into context, we have to review four point three point five relocation. Section four point three point four foundation. Section four point three point two expansion. And section four point three limitations of height. So I've got. Four point three point five relocation from me now.
And that is because it is referred to in four point three point six. Reconstruction or replacement, which is what they're actually doing.
Yes.
And that's why we are. Turning to the provisions requirements of four point three point five, not because necessarily they are relooking one.
Bear with me while I read this kind of. Introductory paragraph of four point three point five. This is the standards of section four point three point five relocation, nonforming. Structure. What that says is that the site of relocation conforms to all set back requirements to the greatest practical extent. As determined by the planning board and provided that the applicant demonstrates that the present subsurface sewage. Disposal system meets the requirements of state law in the state domain subsurface wastewater disposal rules. Or that a new system can be installed in compliance with the law and said rules. In no case shall a structure be relocated in a manner that causes the structure to be more nonconforming. In determining whether the building relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. The planning board shall consider. Our first thing is size of the lot.
The size of the lot is two point six eight.
And where are you getting that? You shouldn't reference. There you go. I like the key in like lines. And but like they do have it in their summer. I'm not mistaken, it's on sheet V zero, one, zero. That's that Herrick and Salisbury survey. Looking where is the area. Applicant would like to be us to another drawing. Or in that case, we could reference. Yeah, it's on the three, page four of the nine nineteen. The one point six acres relative to the nine nineteen application letter. And. The lot is fully developed. Yes, it is.
Steeply sloped and fully developed.
Therefore, I mean, we should probably think about a conclusion of law. Relative to the size of the law, law being of. A complicating factor or. The context of a potential relocation to be considered, but there's nowhere to go.
Right. Fun fact is that the lot is one point six eight acres. And those acres are fully developed. And the location of the subject structures. There is no other location for the subject for these structures.
Steeply sloped.
Yes, well, that's topography, so. And therefore, the conclusion is that. The location proposed is. The only possible location for these structures on this lot.
We we have in the past done. Votes on each one and we've done it as a single one at the end, just throwing that out there.
I know, and it seems like every time it's different. I think in this case. Again, where we have a specific purpose. Sections identified in our purpose and we have those specific section. And we did not checklist forms to. Review. I think we should just keep doing this.
Well, we, I mean, and we could just go through each one of these and then move it. So the property salt of the land is a very steeply sloped land and there is no other. Do you want a, you want a map that shows that?
Again, I think maybe what was the drawing and reference, the Herrick and Salisbury survey. Yeah, G O one O. Shows. Significant topography on site.
There's steep topography. And the conclusion therefore is again that there is no other. Feasible location other than the existing location for these buildings.
I think too they want a decision, they should hear decisions that. You know, in terms, in terms of a possible consideration of relocation that doesn't make sense for us to. Consider a relocation because of the top topography. Because if you were to relocate it, if you even had room, it would impact the topography significantly.
Sure, if the topography makes relocation. Not, it is not possible given. About impractical at best. So that would be our conclusion. So I'm on to the soil erosion.
What's the next for?
Attention for soil erosion, the board finds. That. There isn't much soil to. And. And it's not anticipated that it's going to be. Soil erosion as a result of this. The the location of these buildings. Furthermore, by lifting the buildings above. The flood level, hopefully, up to the FEMA, above the FEMA standards. One might minimize. The the effort will be to minimize any potential future erosion that may occur. And therefore we conclude. That this project will not. Generate. Soil erosion. Now, they are going to be putting on, if I may, just talk out loud, they're going to be putting a road in to accomplish all of this. And that. Is that also, that's part of the first application that we did? So that's already.
It's already in.
Already in. Right, and they've already. Demonstrated to the board that they have sufficient controls to handle any.
Nutshell, we're demonstrating, look, keeping these things where they are is raising them is minimizing.
Correct.
Do you want to cite that to a specific document you did on the other two is the only reason I ask.
That we could refer to this one that got a narrative on it. And they've got narratives on all of this.
They have an erosion and sedimentation control plan that they're referencing in this letter. See the erosion. Previously submitted.
Guys, but she is that one, there is.
By raising these build components to FEMA fire levels, the potential for long-term erosion is minimized. And then they've referenced the previously. Uh, submitted. Of erosion sedimentation.
But in this application, they're only considering the buildings, that's what impact they would have on soil erosion.
And certainly in our site. Involved in, in pain. I think that's what they're referencing.
Right.
There you go.
So. Findings of fact are that by rebuilding these structures in their current location. The board finds that they will minimize. The potential for present and future construction and future soil erosion and therefore. The standards of. Four point three point five have been met. Location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties.
That's the next review criteria.
And the findings of fact are that there already are significant enough. Most of the rest of the property is already built with existing properties that in terms of elevation are either up above it or below it, there are the pool. Features that we've already discussed in a prior application. And these are in a sort of an elevation rise or in sort of a middle tier. And there is no other location on that property and this is not going to change. The location of these structures, either as it relates to other buildings on the property or on adjacent properties.
They're all interconnected.
They're all interconnected, they're all, they're all components of a whole. So we conclude that. They have met the provisions of. Four point three point fives that pertain to the location of other structures on the property or adjacent properties. The location of the septic system and other onsite so suitable septic systems, we find that is not. Applicable because this system is connected to public sewer. Vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation. There is very little to none according to the plans. The existing deck and structures are devoid of vegetation. And I'm referencing the narrative submitted by the applicant's page.
They also have a demolition.
Right.
Sheet P M one hundred.
They refer to. No vegetation removal is required as part of the reconstruction. During construction, an existing invasive species not weed will be removed and replaced with indigenous plantings and all existing landscape beds. Therefore. We find that. They have met the standards of four point three point fives that pertains to the removal of vegetation. And there's a section on this regarding applicable federal, state and town permits in place for any construction. There, I, I'm not aware of any other conditions other than the permit, obtaining applicable federal, state and town permits. Therefore. The board finds that the standards of section four point three point five relocation of non-conforming structures has been met.
And we want a motion second.
Motion. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, signs that one. If we've done four, three, six, make sure we have jurisdiction, we have did four, three, five in the context of relocation. Now we get kicked to four, three, four, foundation. Section four, three point four to be specific.
Right.
That's. That's this guy.
We find that. We have already determined that this has met. The criteria four point three point five with respect to the relocation of the buildings. Have been placed as far back, relatively setback requirement to the great, to the greatest practical extent. We've already determined that. So what we haven't determined is that.
What are they doing for their foundations?
Alright, the foundations in each of these buildings are currently. The evidence shows are, are currently wooden pilings. Except for the kitchen. Which is a concrete foundation. And the. Wooden pilings will be replaced with pilings of a height to meet. FEMA standards. In the same location except for the shade pavilion.
So it just again. Putting, kind of shaping the ball of wax we're addressing here. This is like specific of. The foundation, um, work that they're proposing relative to similar criteria for when.
Okay, so we're going to do this again.
As they think about it, like as they're, they're, they're re. Demoling and reinstalling these foundations and their proposed configurations. How are they, how are they addressing?
Okay.
Those criteria, the slope, the land, the vegetation, the.
The book, the size of the lot, which we've already, alright, so the size of the lot, the board finds.
It, because what it does is it like considers the foundation almost like as a structure in itself, right?
Okay, okay, so the board finds that the size of the lot is one point six eight acres. I'm not sure what kind of conclusion to make about that, although when this one point six eight acres.
Reconstructing found foundations on a lot with no developable.
Right, and the lot is already entirely, almost entirely developed. And there are no other possible locations for replacement.
So the proposed pure, pure foundation and reuse of the existing foundation is. Is, um. Really being placed to the greatest practical extent.
Yes, back from the set, back from. From the setback. Within the setback.
So what's the next step?
So. So the board finds. That the soil erosion. The, the, the proposed pilings are going to essentially be in the same location only higher. And that.
Open foundation system.
Yeah, open foundation systems except for the kitchen. Which will be. A slab, well, my understanding is it'll be a slab based upon proposal.
You're reusing the foundation under the kitchen.
Right, but by making it higher.
Yeah.
But is that a slab currently?
So, so I think we need to reference the two, make sure that in our motions we're referencing two types of foundations.
Right. With respect to the pilings, which may be supplemented by concrete. In the new construction. By placing the pilings in essentially the same location. The board, it, the applicant is minimizing the potential for soil erosion. Similarly, with respect to the reuse of the existing foundation for the kitchen. They. Applicant is minimizing the potential for soil erosion. The one that's a little different is the shade pavilion, which actually will be on pilings, but will be moved back. Further away. From within the setback and so. But in a way that does not. Create additional. Potential for soil erosion. And moves it further back from within the setback. Therefore, the board concludes that. The provisions of four point three point four. With regard to soil erosion have been met. Part of the land. The board finds it's still the same very steep piece of land. And therefore.
Using an open foundation system and existing foundation.
Right, well. Is the only practical. Way to reconstruct these buildings. And therefore. With respect to that. The applicant has met provisions of four point three point four.
With little to no adverse impact.
Other structures on the lot and on adjacent properties, the, the property is already structured almost entirely. And these buildings will remain.
Foundations.
These foundations will remain in their current location with one minor exception. And will continue to function as a whole with the other structures on this property. And they will not affect adjacent properties any differently than the current struc, the current foundations do. Therefore, the board finds that. That the applicant has met the provisions of four point three point four. With regard to the location of the subject system, the board finds that is not applicable because. The, uh, project is tied into municipal wastewater. Within a shoreline zone only with regard to clearing of vegetation. Board finds that there will be no trees removed. The board finds that any, that there will be minimal disturbance of vegetation because there currently isn't. Any vegetation. And. Therefore. With respect to these foundations. The board finds that.
Can they propose? That we keep referencing. The proposed. Open pure foundation and the reuse, the existing. Crosswalks.
Let me just ask you about that, about that, uh, one question about that. I know that we talked about. In the prior project, there was, there was like vegetation, like seaweed that was going to have to be moved when you did that kind of work. Do you anticipate any of that for these foundations pilings?
Just to not be. Placing it with indigenous, uh, material, like relative to the foundations.
Yeah.
The only thing right there is that not actually, uh. Not weed.
Okay.
There, there at the piles and there it's in the sand. Rockweed likes growing that intertidal.
Yeah.
And that's all the way up outside of the splash zone, so.
Oh, yeah, therefore, the. Not sure what we're, what we're saying, the board finds.
That the, the proposed open pure foundation. System and the reuse of the existing cross wall and slab.
Obviate the need to clear vegetation.
Yes.
And therefore, the board finds that the provisions of four, four point three point four with respect to clearing vegetation have been met. And the board finds there are no additional approval conditions beyond the receipt of all applicable federal, state and town permits. It is pretty.
Any further discussion? Sorry, all those in favor? Opposed?
Moving on.
Alright, so. Alright, we go from four point three point four to four point three point two. And what? Yeah, so what? In a nutshell, what this one is talking about, this is talking about like, um, you know, the. The area and height of its, of allowable expansion. Where, and this was relative, this one was relative to the question I had about where. The state. The, it's changed where, um, you know, to be in compliance with the FEMA standards. You, you can raise your ridge as you raise your floor to be compliant and that's what they're doing here.
Right.
In one case.
Right. Right, because in that.
And just, uh, bear with me, just where.
This was added last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Being, being like elaborated and finally caved.
Yeah.
One was always against the other.
Yeah.
Because you know about forming, you couldn't raise the height, because you're limited to a height.
Yeah, like the little structure in Seal Harbor where they had to lop off the top of the. Yeah, it's ridiculous, um, finally corresponded those. Good, so what, what this, what section four point three point two, bear with me. It's talking about, it's non-conforming structures and expansion in the shoreline zone. And Anne's following along right here. Yeah, and what this is talking about is that all new structures in the shoreline zone must meet the applicable shoreline setback requirements in section three. And section six, um, yeah, non-conforming structure in the shoreline zone may be added to or expanded obtaining a permit from the same governing. Authority a, as that for a new structure. If such addition or expansion does not increase the non-conformity of the structure and it's in accordance with the subsections of four, three, two. And what the subsections of four, three, two talk about are. The different regions within the seventy five foot setback of compliance, like you have a zero to twenty five foot. Zone and then you have a twenty six to seventy five foot zone. And each of those two zones have different requirements where, you know, in the zero to twenty five. You know, you're allowed eight hundred, eight hundred square feet or thirty percent larger and fifteen feet. If you're out twenty six to seventy five, you're allowed a thousand square feet. Um, thirty, thirty percent what, hot more or up to twenty feet. But in this case, these, the majority of these structures. Are, um. Are not, um. Yeah, they're not enlarging, um, they're working with the pre-existing footprints and the whole, the dining pavilion is the only one. That I believe the board understood was being raised. That I believe the board understood was being raised, and that was being raised two feet. That, correct?
They're all being.
They're all, they're all, they're all being.
I thought one of.
Well.
The ceiling.
It's the pitch on the roof is increasing. So as you, you guys are making these, that's why you're shaking your heads. So that, as you're raising these guys to meet the FEMA specifications, the buildings are becoming taller. And we don't regulate that because now FEMA is aligned and allowing for that, we don't have to look at the specific criteria of four, three, two.
You do footnote F.
Yeah, we.
Yes. I would.
We still have a thirty-five foot.
No, that, that's at, at seventy-five feet, beyond seventy-five feet, no thirty-five.
Only the structure revision, you're in the, the expansion category is that's where it talks about the height, they're not expanding the footprint. Uh we already talked about that. Yeah. The only place you get the stuff behind it is under the section of uh expansion. And then under the, that section of expansion, if you look at the height, whether or not it's compliant with what's allowed by FEMA. Which is a maximum of four feet above. Three feet to the bottom, and so.
Right.
That's where you start. And they're two feet above.
So footnote F is what you should be reading.
Yeah, so I'm.
Do you have it?
I was gonna just read it, so.
Well, I didn't hope it was.
It's, it's on, it's on this.
Okay, good.
Form, so what, we're about recording it?
They gotta record it.
Yeah, so we ran into this before, just be aware of that. Any approved plan for expansion or non-conforming structure under section four point three point two. Must be recorded by the applicant in the registry of deeds of the county in which property is located within ninety days of approval. The recorded plan must include the existing proposed footprint of structures on the property, the existing and proposed height of the structures. The shoreline zone boundary and the evidence of approval by the permitting authority. The Yale.
Yeah.
Well, we need a findings of fact and conclusion of law.
Okay.
Formed into a motion.
What we found.
What Alan wants to do it now.
We don't want, we find that the structures. Are all being elevated.
In order to be.
In order to be compliant with FEMA recommendations, but in no case. Will be raised. More than three feet above the base blood elevation level.
And.
And the structure is, the structures are being re- reconstructed. Relocated. Replaced within the boundaries of the fossil, so the water body or wetback setback requirements is, are met to the greatest extent of practice. That's, I guess, the conclusions. Um. Therefore, we find that they have met the provisions of four point three point two. Want to say more than that, I'm basically just reading that statute because we find as a matter of fact that they're not. Elevating any of the. Buildings above. More than three feet above the FEMA recommended, recommended height.
Yeah.
You should have them. You know, show what are, explain the existing elevation and the pros.
Sure, I can do that.
Maybe, I will describe as uh.
The existing elevation of the men's locker room, the floor height. Is ten point nine three. And it's being raised to sixteen feet, one foot above the FEMA recommended fifteen. The deck. The final height of the deck, I don't have the current height of that, but it will be raised to one foot above the fifteen foot FEMA recommendation. The shade pavilion. Will rise, the floor height will rise from eleven to sixteen feet, which is also one foot above. The FEMA recommendations, and the building height will rise from twenty-five to thirty feet. As a result. Um. The kitchen. Is on a concrete slab of thirteen point thirteen feet. And a slab of the same dimension and location will be constructed to raise it to sixteen feet. One foot above the FEMA recommended fifteen feet. The height, because of that, and only because of that, the height will rise from thirty-six point six to, to thirty-six point six from thirty-three point eight. The dining pavilion. Will also be raised to sixteen feet, one foot above FEMA recommendations, I'm not sure what it currently is. What is it? Twelve point six, thank you very much. And the final height. Will be twenty-seven point seven inches and seven. Time, time of the roof will be twenty-seven feet, seven and three eighths inches. Is that correct?
Thank you. It's twenty-nine point nine five.
For which?
For the uh dining.
Okay. Thank you.
What was that number? Twenty-nine point nine five.
That's because you're changing the pitch to accommodate a. Okay.
Well, increasing uh back doors if the. Um within the dining pavilion.
Okay.
It's always seven feet tall.
Again. I would say, therefore, we find that they have met provisions of four point three point two.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One point three point two F.
Well, hey, yeah, technically, we're. We're doing section four point three point two expansion in section four point three F. Four point three point two F.
Four point three point two F, yes.
Okay.
But what I'm getting at is we're reviewing the entire section. Plus subs, plus footnote F.
But no, that's the only one that applies.
Right, so I think that. So I think we should make reference to that.
Yeah. So our view of section four point three point two. Finds that the only applicable provision to this application is four point three point two F. Yes, and the other sections of that provision are not applicable. And that the applicant has met the provisions, the requirements of four point three point two F.
I think. Motion.
It wasn't, yes, thanks.
Any further discussion? Applicants company with that motion?
Uh you have a section, you have two sections here.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was getting at, it's uh.
Okay, I see what it is.
You, you see it, the first one is four, three, two. It's like the ones coming relative, four, three, two F. Right, so in the motion.
Want to make sure we catch both what kind of thing you want.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Sam, if I'm not mistaken, that was it.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Want something more?
Can I just ask, does, the approval of all of these mean an approval of? That application, or does there need to be an issue?
Yeah, why don't, why, why don't we have Yale make an overarching motion to just steal the deal?
Can I have, do we have all of them?
Yeah. Paul, can you hear Paul?
The board finds. That the applicant has met the provisions of four point three point four foundation, four point three point five relocation of non-conforming structure. Four point three point six reconstruction or replacement of a non-conforming structure, and four point three point two extent, expansion in the shoreline, four point three point six F. Expansion in the shoreline zone. And therefore approves the application as stated.
All those in favor?
I.
I. You guys want these back? Want to give them?
Yeah.
You can recycle them.
Yeah, there you go. But you got them.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah. First construction review.
Yeah.
Can't wait for that.
Yes.
Bring your band.
A motion to.
Well, is there any other, other?
Well, other thing I want to say is that as the chair of the loser advisory committee, I went to the select board meeting on Monday. Because at the first loser advisory committee meeting. We had a discussion that involved um a member who is also on the select board. Questioning the scope of the work of the loser advisory committee. And after that meeting, I contacted him and said, maybe I should come to a select board meeting and we should talk about this. And the, I did that on Monday, and the upshot of that is that they have asked the loser advisory committee to draft. A statement of purpose, if you will, over, and the scope of, of work for the loser vice, uh advisory committee, I've. Taken my first stab at that, I shared it with a couple of people, I haven't yet gotten any feedback, we have a loser advisory committee meeting on Tuesday of next week. And I will bring it up at that time and probably circulate that draft if I don't hear any. Complaints or concerns, it's basically, the way I'm structuring it, it's that the loser advisory committee will work. To attempt to make recommendations with respect to any needed land use. Ordinance changes, additions, deletions. And it will do so in conjunction with the planning board and with the select board. And if the public brings things to the loser for his action, I think it needs to go. I think that also needs to be referred to either the select board or the planning board or both before the loser on its own mountain takes up. Um and, and, anything that the public brings before, for, for action, for example, somebody is bringing up the idea that. Um. They want some sort of allowance made so that they can put tables outside their business on Main Street in Northeast Harbor. And. That is something that a board other than the land use advisory committee, which is an advisory committee. Should determine is something that. That you want the land use advisory committee to pursue as a matter of, it's. When it prioritizes that work, and also that we would work. With the planning board and the select board to prioritize what tasks, knowing that not everything gets done in particular. Year, and one other thing I put in there is that it's always our goal to attempt to present all those that. Clarify and simplify ordinances to the greatest extent possible. So that in our rambling nutshell, rambling nutshell, is the outline of what I'm proposing, the scope of work of the advisory committee.
I think the committee needs to be renamed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because it's not just land use, it's something that we're looking at. We should be like an ordinance review committee. Uh advisory or something, who? Because we are, we're getting, like you just said, the sale of food merchandise is under. Use of public property. Side of off streets, et cetera.
Right.
Um. We're always want to be a program ordinance, that's gonna be brought to you guys for the subject tank inspection.
Right.
Um, you know, and the super ordinance is under jurisdiction of the public works director. Um, you know, like in the low ping, right away over there, and that's, that's, these are all different ordinances that are not land used, but some divisions not land used, some do.
Well, but it's not a loose though, but I think it's definitely land used.
It's not a use, yes, it's not, yeah, but it's.
I'm using that term generically, land used.
It's not in the land use zoning ordinance.
Correct.
It's a separate ordinance, but what I'm saying is, and like the mobile home one.
Yep.
I mean, these are all different ordinances that, you know, it's not land use, it's land use, but it's not in the land use ordinance.
Right.
Which is what we were tasked to work on when we became this committee, was to work on land use zoning ordinance stuff.
Right, I do think that clearly needs to, that is a key mitten. Task right now is to clarify, first of all, what you mean, what we mean when we say that we're the land use in the context of that committee. Um, and my, my perception at this point in time is that if it's something that the planning board may end up touching, then it's land use. And that doesn't answer your other questions that, you know, we need to.
Yeah, I mean, that's subdivision and that's land use, that's it.
Well, it's quar- quarry and.
And the.
I don't know, is mineral extraction in there too?
That's in the quarry.
The solar will be discussed and that.
So it won't be a separate ordinance, it won't be in the land use zone.
Right, but who will be?
I don't know.
Right, that may add up to the planning board.
Could be.
Right. So you're right, that we do need to. Figure that out, and there is, the reasons touched off is that the member of, of the select board star. A very narrow. Purpose, like, the only purpose for the land use advisory committee was to help. Simplify the, 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 the land use ordinance. And to take out.
But don't add stuff in it, don't make it bigger. But the simplicity or the, you know, lack, uh lack of, it, it's no longer there anymore. You, you've got to put more stuff in your ordinance because, you know, um.
Well, what I said to the select board is. It's always a goal to not add things, but it's never the reality to not add things. Because humans are really clever creatures, and we're always looking for inventive new ways.
And they're always hiring attorneys.
To use, to use land, and it may have been one thing when we all had a hundred neighbors. When we didn't necessarily impact on our neighbors all the time, that's not the case anymore.
This is the society, the way the, you know, it's all, I mean, it's just, it's, you have to, you have to put in, or else it'll be the wild west, but you have to put in regulations and. You know.
You, we do, and that's the nature of every aspect of law, it isn't just land use, it's like a force. I mean, criminal statutes when I started were considerably smaller than they are now, et cetera, so. The whole is true across the board, and it always will be, it's the nature of.
You know, my job, I, I used to deal with the homeowners or, you know, now I, it's, it's attorneys.
Yeah.
I'm constantly dealing with attorneys.
Yeah.
And it's so fun because. You know how they be.
I've heard. Yes, yes, and they're always looking to. Push boundaries. Um, that's, that's, and that's, okay, I mean, that's. Um, that's, that's, and that's, okay, I mean, that's the, the way, that's purpose of these things. So anyway, we're at work on trying to clarify that, and I think, you know, we're gonna have, have to have more discussions, so I'll probably have to be back to the select board and talk about, but Will's next step will be to talk about it at our meeting on Tuesday, which is, which is at five, and everyone's in top of it. And appreciate it.
Thank you. How you can make your.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
You did it.
That, that may have been weird, but I, I don't come out of here.